Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
May I have a statement of open public meetings act?
In compliance with the open public meetings act adequate notice that this meeting of the council was provided by transmitting a copy of the meeting notice to the Madison Eagle and Morris County Daily Record and by posting a copy on the bulletin board at the main entrance of Borough Hall and filing a copy in the office of clerk all on August 1st, 2012. Copies of said notice were made available to members of the general public.
Thank you.
Roll call. Council President Tsukamoto is excused. Councilman Esposito?
Here.
Councilman Links?
Here.
Councilman Catalonello is excused for family vacation. Councilman Landrigan?
Here.
Councilwoman Vitale?
Here.
Mayor Conley?
Here.
We have a quorum. Mayor.
Thank you. This is an advertised public meeting, so that's why we went through the formalities here, but this is a very informal meeting and plan is to get some participation from the audience. And at this point, so the council can be a little more comfortable, I'll ask them to join the audience, except for Doc who is going to be sharing in the presentation. And I thank everyone for coming out tonight and joining us. We are also recording it because we recognize it's August and we might miss some people and we can, we'll be putting this on cable, FiOS, and also on RoseNet. And also, I see former council member Don Bowen in the front row. Great job Friday night in our downtown concert series. Very...
Good morning.
Okay, as mentioned back in January and then at recent council meetings, we had the goal of having periodic town meetings to get feedback from our residents. And so this is the first of them and the topic for this one is our electric utility. This is a town meeting that there's only nine other towns in the state that could run this similar meeting and we're probably only one that's doing it right now. And I start off going the wrong direction. Oops. So our facilitators for tonight, myself, Mayor, and Councilman Dr. Vincent Esposito, who is liaison to the utilities. And basically the agenda, we're going to go over a little history, we're going to talk about the benefits of owning our electric utility. Often with benefits come challenges, so we'll talk about that. Give you a little basis on the operations, talk about future goals, and then part two is when we get you involved with some discussion questions. The goal here is try to get through this in an hour, but our guarantee is 90 minutes. So as we go through, we'll play that by ear. And we know if we spend too much time on the first half, which is the information, you'll have information overload and you might not be ready to discuss things. So we'll try to keep it all in balance. Now, one of the things we always have to have when you have a town meeting is ground rules. Number one is I just talked about our time guideline. So as discussions happen, you may find me cutting discussions short. Don't take it personally, I'm just trying to make sure we get through everything and everyone has an opportunity. So that's step one. Another thing is we ask some questions. You'll be throwing out some answers. There are no wrong answers. Everyone's getting A+ on this, so don't be bashful. We listen to everything, we'll take everything down. Your role here, you can pick it. You can be someone that speaks, you can be someone just listening. You don't feel obligated and if you don't want to listen, that's fine too, unless you're elected official, you're obligated to do that second one. And this last thing is also for our, for myself and the council, the sponge. We're here to absorb. So you won't hear any comments from the elected officials today. You'll be, we'll be listening to you and taking it back. This is your turn to talk, except for the fact that Doc and I get the podium for a little bit. So the question, who owns the utility? The answer, you and 16,000 other people in this town. I'm going to hand off to Doc and he's going to cover the history and challenges and I'll be back.
Thank you all for coming. Our founding fathers of Madison decided that we should be sustainable for our future. And this was thinking about way back in the late 1800s when we decided to create our own electric utility. Again, also around this time, I believe, we also started our water utility as well, but our electrical utility was there to help sustain our future. And this is the power plant which is on Station Road. And this is where it stands right now, minus the stack that used to at one time generate electricity. The reason it's called Station Road is because the water and light station was at the end of this road. So when they named it off a main street going down to Station Road, Station Road ends at the Water and Light Department. Our operations, basically, we still read our meters the old fashioned way. We still walk around town, we still write down numbers on a booklet, we still bring them in and then they put them in by hand. But our customer service representatives are top notch and they're on top of things at every single moment of the time that we as customers would call. The system serves over 6,500 customers from small residential to large corporate, including our commercial district as well. So we do provide a great service to those customers. We have two substations and nearly 300 miles of underground and overhead cables to transmit our electricity to our consumers. We place a great value on our system and in order for us to replace, if we had to replace, the replacement cost of the system would be well over $40 million, if not more, a lot more than that. So we, our maintenance crew and our electrical department keeps up with their maintenance to make sure that these lines are run as efficiently as possible. So when there is an outage, they're out there at a moment's notice to take care of the things that need to be taken care of. As I mentioned a little bit, the safety system maintenance, all of the distribution system is installed, maintained and repaired by our eight man crew. The crews are well trained and with over 150 years of combined industry experience. So they're out there on top of everything to make sure that they're, we get what we pay for. The service benefits of owning our own electric utility. The dedicated lineman to get Madison back online quickly and safely. Because of the vast experience that they have and the knowledge of the system that they have, they're up there and taking care of things at a moment's notice, whether it's a tree branch that fell, whether it's a pole that may have gotten hit unfortunately by a car, they're there taking care of it for, not only for the consumer's safety and the nearby safety, but also for their safety as well. Every year, they have aggressive tree trimming in and around the wires to make sure there's no dangling, dangling trees or dangling branches that may come down even at a brisk wind. And all of it's maintained throughout town to make sure that we're not at a problem with any kind of a storm or anything in the future. Our service benefits of owning our, again, back if you remember, September of 2011 was Hurricane Irene. They were out and about and taking care of things quickly and efficiently. They were there while other towns took days for repairs to, we were in hours of taking care of problems. So that is our major benefit, one of our major benefits of having our own electric utility is that, you know, we pride ourselves in coming out and taking care of things quickly and efficiently for our consumers. There is quick and coordinated responses from utility linemen, police, public works, also shortens outage times. They are all there helping one another, taking care of things from big trees to small branches to poles to safety, vehicular safety as well as pedestrian safety as well, utilizing all of the departments together. Our billing staff is dedicated to personally take care of the Madison customers. I'm going to bring this over to Mayor Conley. He'll take over from here.
If you're a day or two with your, paying your bill, as long as you smile, they will take care of you nicely. Before I go on to the, a little bit on the financial benefits, I forgot one key introduction in the front row, right next to Don Bowen is our superintendent electric utility, Mike Piano. Mike, thank you for being there and thank you for your years dedicated service to that utility, keeping this up and running. One of the key things we have to keep in mind as we look at this pie, one is when we talk about the operations of the borough, you almost only hear about that right half the $25 million borough budget, borough operations budget. Reality is, we are a close to a $50 million operation when you consider the electric utility and the water utility. We are not talking about the water utility today for two reasons. One, in itself, electric utility provides enough discussion. Water utilities, municipal owned water utilities are far more common, so we're not out there like we are with the electric utility. But that also represents, even though that slice is small, the infrastructure that the water utility represents, water mains, the delivery system, the wells, the towers is very impressive too. So we'll probably cover that at a later time, maybe incorporate it in our fall town meeting, which will be on Capitol Projects. Now, to look at the electric utility, and this is sometimes confusing, we call it profit or whatever, surplus, that the electric utility spun off $3 million, 3.5 million dollars to our general municipal budget. And often comes up, well, why don't you charge less for electric? But that represents the slice that if this was JCPenel territory or PSMG territory, that's kind of like a slice that goes into stock payers pockets, goes out dividends. So we're not much different than that, but we probably pay better dividends. Because if we took that 3.5 million dollar transfer out of it and maintain services as we do today, property taxes on the average home, which is the value at 691, not assessed value, but value, market value, would go up by $700. Look at your stock portfolio, probably don't have many stocks that paid that much dividends in last year. So that is an impressive dividend payout and something to be very proud of and something that everyone benefits. Another way to look at this is coming up in the, if I turn my slides the right way here, is that we are allowed, we generate revenue from other organizations that don't, Drew University, nonprofit, they don't pay property taxes, largest electric customer, so they are helping support us. And we also have control of our rates. But we also, for those that decide they want to run the air conditioner at 68, 24 hours a day, that's their choice. And that money, a lot, big chunk pays for electricity they just burned. And number two, money goes back into our operating because they made a choice and we are benefiting for that. For the person that wants to be very conservative, raise their temperature to 83 during the day, 74 at night, they are controlling their electric, paying far less, and they made a nice little choice. You don't have that choice on property taxes, you certainly have the choice when you play with the meter or the thermostat. And I'm going to switch back as we do our little tag team here, as Doc will now talk about other benefits of owning electric utility and also talk about future plans.
So we take a look at picture here, what is missing from the picture? Basically, it's our utility poles. In our downtown area, all our structures underneath, which takes care of, gets rid of all that unsightly wires and poles and so forth, and they're all underground vaults and transformers there to help power the downtown. Which means that owning our own electric utility gives us a better control of the infrastructure that we have for that. Other benefits of owning our own electric utility, the electricity the municipality consumes is traditionally purchased at a very reasonable price. We have, recently have procured future purchases of wholesale electricity, which begins June of 2014. With the help of Jim Burnett and Mr. Cody, we have procured almost 50% less of our wholesale over a couple of years after we begin. So we're looking forward to that and I think it's going to be beneficial for the entire community for that. And we were able to do that because of what, because we own our electricity. Buying $16 million electricity every year, that we do that, uncertainty when to buy, changing market conditions, peak demand charges, these are all, one way or another, built into that $16 million that we do. If both Jersey Central feeder lines go down, the entire town goes dark. And I think we remember just recently what happened with that. Our Halloween storm took us three to four days to get our electricity and it wasn't because of our, it was on our side, it was the feeder line that was coming in and took a long time for their crews to come out. So our future goals of our electric utility, we are in the process of doing a full asset management review, not only our electric utility, but all our utilities, to see where we are now and what we may need in the future, whether it's two years, five years, 10 years down the road, to have some sort of a plan to better facilitate our asset management. If a, if one of our substations happens to blow up or burn down, it may cost us, Mike, if you, may cost us well over a million dollars to replace that. So, you know, we have to have some contingency plan to say, where are we going to get this million dollars from if we need to replace it or if something catastrophic should happen. And that's true for some, you know, our other utilities as well. We're going to review all of our equipment, infrastructure, and then rank them, each piece based on age and general condition, replacement cost, and importance of the piece of equipment to the overall operation of the utility. So we were going to be staging them to see exactly what our relative risks are in terms of the age of the, of the equipment. And this includes not only the substations and the lines and stuff, it also includes our equipment that takes the men out to take care of the problems that may exist, whether it's the bucket trucks and trailers and so forth. Our other goal is, and we've been talking about for the past six months or so, more readily than we had in the past, is our automated meter reading system. This is just a, the more data will allow for time of use of rates, whether it's seasonal, day versus evening, peak versus non-peak, and so forth. Basically, what we'll do, just in general, there'll be a smart reader or automated meter, not only for electric, but we're looking for it into the water system as well, which will feed and communicate directly to the utility office to eventually in the future, may even communicate to say, you're using too much listric, you're not using enough, you know, cut back on here, try, you know, peak is too much. So that way, we're all better informed of how we use our electricity wisely and conservatively. These will, this will give us the ability to see and manage your consumption from the computer, your home display, or even the smartphone. You can turn around and say, well, if there's nobody home and I'm running my air conditioner in mid-peak at 2 o'clock in the afternoon at 75 degrees, well, maybe we can change that and go back and bring it up to 77 or 78. Although we started off as a generation plant, you know, there's, could be a possibility to build our own generation plant, although there's really no room in town to build one. This is a, could be on our list. This generation could also be a large solar facility, it could be a wind or other renewable energy power plant besides a gas generation.
Just a note I should have mentioned before, we do have extra copies of the PowerPoint which we'll hand out afterwards, but I always, I like to have things as a surprise. I hate people reading that head, so we held it back a little bit. Before we go to our discussion questions, are there any questions for clarity on what we just presented? So not any, not opinions, we'll have your chance for opinions, but if you have a question on, on anything that was just presented, what I'm going to do in this process to keep things flowing is, we are recording this, but rather than have people come back and forth, you'll state it, I'll repeat it, that way we can double check that we got it right and that we'll have it on the film and then we'll get the answer on the film. I'm dating myself. James?
I think I liked it. Will it be a matter of public record per address or would it just be a matter of public record for overall consumption? Because you said how much, how little, because some people could sit there and say, it would be discovered that their home was really vacant and insurance companies could sit there and sit to the record and say, hey, there's still a little electricity consumption at X building, they go investigate it. Would the, would this, any of that be protected via privacy matters? Is that considered?
That's a very good question. The easy answer, I would say right off the bat, is it would not be public record. Obviously, we would only want total consumption to go out there and not individual. But as we set this up, we've got to make sure, since we are a government entity, subject to the Oprah rules, which are the Open Public Records Act, that we don't have data that we don't want to be shared, that could all, could be shared. So I think that's something we'll make sure we'll put in a hopper that we track and don't set anything up. For example, there are, in completely different category, but falls in this, towns that maintain email addresses as a community, you know, as a community service, that is the town government that has them, those are subject Open Public Meetings Act. That's why we don't have our own distribution. Nixle is standalone system, is not part of the borough government. So that is, we'll put, keep that on the radar. Great question. Yes?
I wasn't sure what you said about buying wholesale electricity in 2014.
So basically, our current contract is coming up and so we've started going out into the future buying pieces, one third chunk. So we've already bought some of our demand need for the future. I guess the question was, what do you mean by the already purchasing for the future? So, and this is a, a different sort of approach we had before, so rather than locking in 100%, which we did on our previous contract, we're buying by piece and having a better rate coming from that. Other questions?
Mayor, the presentation was all the, apparently on the status quo. If we investigated alternatives such as if we were to sell it, what would be the return on some of the plant? How is that taking into account future capital expenditures that we're having to do? I know the, what is the million dollar number for getting new metering, et cetera, for the housing, et cetera, the buildings?
It's a good question and some of that may come up during discussion time. Again, the question was, we presented some of the future ideas, but none of them included selling off the utility or knowing what the impact would be. And that is something that certainly could be addressed. I have a resident who keeps on coming to me and saying, you know, the thorough should not be in electric business, sell it off. Personally, I don't think that's a good idea, but it's probably worthwhile looking at, just so we have a full understanding, what is, what would it mean not to own it if we sold it off? I don't know if that, did that answer? Yeah, it's like, it's...
It hasn't been done yet.
It has not been done yet, but certainly could be, yeah, it's not on the radar currently, but we may, I think it certainly is a worthwhile question because if the answer is, you're crazy to sell it off, then at least we have the research behind it to say, yes, we want to keep the utility.
I don't know what the multiple revenue are, the utility, electric generation and distribution. There are three times revenues, four times, two times, and then five times, and you're talking about $100 billion, let's say.
Right.
One time, that's $20 million.
Yep.
There's a difference.
Yes?
Mayor, you said that when you first started, it was so close to $3.5 million, is that for 2011?
Yeah, the way it's, the budget, it's the 2012 budget and it's, so the surplus from 2011 got, gets transferred over going into the budget for this.
That's for the annual?
Yes. And you've heard about the, our current contract, which at the time made some sense to get locked in and it was a reasonable rate. At this point, it is out of the market, but even at that rate, we are still transferring $3.5 million. So that shows. And, you know, it's just one of the tough things about whether it's buying power or anything else, what's the best way to do it? Well, you do it the day after, you have the results, you know? So if you know all the, what's coming in the future, you know, it's a, you're a better person than anyone, you're probably not here because you're making a lot of money somewhere else. Charles?
When we were generating our own...
When we were generating our own electricity, how did we do it?
So, the question was, when we were generating our own electricity, how were, how did we do it? Mike, can you?
That was coal-fired, because the man was very small.
So, again, the answer was, a long time ago, coal-fired, in a much different Madison, very small. Any other clarification?
Just a quick question on the one we, we mentioned, that you'd be able to monitor household by household and consumption. Would that also allow variable rates, days and evenings, excessive use, things like that?
So, with the new rates, metering structure, could we have variable rates based on demand, time of day? And the answer is yes, which is a big missing part of what we do right now, is, and Jim, who is, Jim Burnett, who's shared it quite often, is the, talked about the, the amount we pay when we push the peak up there, and if we had better control on that and encourage people, now we send out email messages, or through various sources, through NICSIL in particular, for voluntary, but it, you know, voluntary is nice, but a little reward in the wallet's even better, so that, this will allow that, to have this varied rate structure.
I was watching PBS, and they were talking about the smart metering, I think it was a town in California. A lot of, I wouldn't say like, some residents of the town were filing a suit to prevent these smart meters from being installed in their homes. So, are you anticipating that when you're doing this MANSI metering, that there would be a fraction, or a small, of people due to their complaints about possible health effects of these radio frequencies that are used and what have you, privacy information, there would be growing for this issue?
So, the question is, is there a pushback? What if there's pushback on the installation of smart, smart meters? Jim, did you?
Well, the first response is that it would be voluntary. You do not want the smart metering on your house because you had health concerns, you wouldn't have to have it on your house. 0.5% California is playing it out across the entire state, less than one-half, 1% of the residents are expressing concern and opting out of it. But if you opt out of it, it will be your choice. If you do opt out of it, it will require us to have a meter reader come out and read your meter, it'll be a service charge connected to that, you'll also most likely get a different rate structure, because we may or may not be able to do the timing of these rates. So, you'll have the opportunity to opt out of it, if you're concerned with, any sort of health-related concern for that. And we do have, I have looked into it, and there, while there are people that are concerned with that, the majority, the vast majority of the health information we review is, doesn't show any other effects, and we'd ask, even as the environmental commission of Madison, as the environmental commission will look at it and make sure that they can accomplish that.
Thank you. Any other clarification?
Not clarifying, but the system, as I understand it, is going to be partially RFP, when we transmit it wireless? And is that a cost consideration, rather than going hardwired, like the cable wire directly into the home, where that health issue would be shielded within the cable itself? And was there any consideration given to actually using the electric wires themselves and pushing broadband across the unused portion of the electric bandwidth, which would give you an option to go into things like fire alarm, murder alarm, hack cable TV services, be more revenue generating than pressure?
So, the question is related to smart meters using a wireless method versus hardwired or even using electric, the, our existing electric lines, they're already in place, and there are, there's technology out there that would allow, as was just pointed out, Madison, in theory, could be in the cable business by using the electric lines, it could also then do the smart metering. Jim, do you have a, why don't you, since, question, yeah, we'll, we'll put you on the spot and put you on the microphone, that way I don't have to repeat-
I'll sit.
Yeah.
The RFP that we're going to put out will not specify just the RF frequency for the communication band. We will allow for power line carrier, which is exactly what you're talking about, Steve, which uses the power lines to actually communicate the signal through Michael's existing electric lines, or our utility's existing electric lines. So, that is another choice or option other than the RF frequency. The health issues of the shielded versus unshielded, every time I pick this up and do this, I'm getting about 500 times more radio frequency or radiation than you do from the RF that's coming off of the meter, and I don't think anybody's putting their head up to the meter. So, there is an exponential reduction in the amount of radiation that comes off of anything as you move farther away from it, and that's certainly the case with the, with the meter itself, so. But in, in short, we're looking at exactly that through the power line carrier. As a matter of fact, our good friends up in Butler, who own their own electric utility, are these, over the, these last few weeks, installing in a Clara system that actually uses that technology. So, we're, we're fortunate, we have our friends in South River that have used an RF frequency system, a mesh net through Elster, which is an RF communication platform, and then our friends in Butler are using the power line carrier. So, we'll learn from their mistakes.
It, it is always, not a bad idea to be later to the dance sometimes, so. Any other questions before we get to our first discussion one? All right. Yeah, James?
Are there current plans to start putting more power lines underground and stuff like that? Is it on the agenda at all, as it stands now? Because I remember, I talked years ago, before we hit the budget crisis with Michael, we're hoping, we were pushing for it, but yeah, I just want to see if it made any, if it was on there at all.
So, the question was, it plans for putting existing overhead underground?
Yeah.
And, yeah, and that, that is a, and that certainly came up, not only in Madison, probably less so in Madison, than it did across the whole state of the, the rough combination back in October. We've got a state with, most towns respect trees, and we have a ton of trees, and we have a state where, because we're developed a long time ago, that most of the lines are overhead, that was a rough combination with the early snowstorm. So, pretty much the only underground lines we have are in some of the new, newer developments and downtown.
New commercial.
Yep. All right.
So, is there an opportunity to ask you any questions later, Mayor?
Uh, to provoke more discussion, if we, yeah, with time remit, yeah, certainly. So, question number one, discussion-wise, is Madison a better place because of our electric utility? Thoughts? James?
I would say, yes, again, mainly because I have time to talk to Mr. Pino, and I know the fact that the service life on our equipment reaches double what some other utilities get, we can fine-tune our staff, enhance, elect the best guys to work with us. It's, again, it's a small, very efficient operation, and I wouldn't touch it, and I think it's doing a wonderful job. It's just like the sewer guys and the water guys, they're going to fix things very quickly, especially for such a small bunch of guys. They're all highly trained, and they give a lot of school, and a lot of the other, like JCPenel, probably just can't afford, keep on every single guy, and that will train them, that will in place and-
So, a couple of key things you point out there. Small but well-trained staff, handpicked, were able to deliver quickly on repairs, staff that know, know the system very well, because they're not all over the place, they're taking care of four square miles, I'm throwing in some of the, I'm, I'm adding a little bit, but-
They do very good care of their trucks, and they can last about twice the life of a sentence, something like that.
And so, right, right on top of all the assets of the utility. Okay.
Well, I notice that you lose that a lot less than Maristown, and I think that's the fact, but what I don't know is if we pay more for our electricity than in those towns, do you know?
Yeah, so the, the comment was, reliability is, appears to be better as we compare our notes with our neighbors, Chad and Maristown, but do we pay more? We are usually right, right, very close, it's very tough, but as you compare, because there's no apples, apples, there's the extra charge, you'll have the kilowatt hour charge, and you can't compare that because the PSE and GJCPenel will have other charges added in. Right now, we are maybe a little bit higher, but not different, in previous times, we were below because of the contract we're in, but we're always, our target is to stay as close to the, the market. One of the philosophies is certainly if, if we are above the market, and certainly above, that will be need to charge to deliver the power, then it could be interpreted as another tax. But if we're with the market, you know, it is certainly, that's the going rate to pay for electricity. So, we're always right, right in, close to the market. Other thoughts on, is Madison a better place because we own our electric utility?
3.5 million a year. If you were to sell the electric company, where would you get that money back, aside from the 700 for a property valuation going up? That seems to me to be difficult to replace.
So, the comment again was the fact that it spins off surplus, right now at 3.5 million dollars. How, how would you replace that if we lost the utility?
I, they've always been very responsive. Whenever trees down, or that, the lines have been taken out, the house can be decided, they're always very, very responsive, I'm glad.
And comment, always responsive.
So, just going back to the clarification, based on usage, would Sydney make more, speaking when you don't put out the areas that were used like this summer?
It's certainly, so would Madison make more when people use more electric? Yes, you know, we certainly, because there's a pay out and what comes in. When we drive up the peak usage, it takes off a chunk of that, so using a lot of electricity and not driving the peak would be the ideal. Anything else on, is Madison a better place?
I just want clarification, 3.5, does that include the pole rental fees we charge to other constituents who use the poles we own in, or if we sold it, would we have, put on the poles?
Yeah, if, if you, if we sold the utility, the, the 3.5 doesn't include that, does not include that income, but yeah, obviously, someone else would start collecting at all that.
I mean, what would the number you think would be if you added in the rental fees of the collection, that the owner's?
Do, do we, it's negligible, yeah.
Negligible?
Yeah, so it's, but good, good point. All right, next discussion question? We've already touched on this a little bit, but should we go ahead and pursue the smart meters, or what about generating our own power? Just as a, a look ahead, we will be talking a little bit about having incentives for sustainability and envi, and becoming leading environmental, so taking that direction, but should we, should we be generating our own power?
Yes.
There you go. Okay.
At the very least, one middleman from my community average, would be more likely to cutting out two or three middlemen with the way you have to buy electricity at this point. So, there's, there's got to be a profit margin inherent in the revenue stream at this point, and you know, five megawatt gas line generator, and just buying the gas to run it, this country's so much better than buying the electricity from someone who bought the generator and then charged, surcharged to you for making the electricity and then transferring it to you as for middlemen, right, middlemen, right there. So, yes, you should definitely be right ahead for generating your own electricity. It was a poor move way back then, they decided to stop generating electricity, and they don't plan on this issue.
So, the, yep. Steven's opinion, yes. And he has pointed out, cutting out the middlemen, we, I talked about before, the, you know, when, when do you buy electric? When do you get these contracts? Well, if you're generating, you're not worried about the best time to buy, you're, you're generating yourself. Of course, you're then figure out when the best time to buy the gas, but that's another. Tom?
Just, I guess, all in all, it's these, though, I'd like to know what the capital cost when you put it in place is, before I decide that's a good idea, and then the risk reward also has to take into account your generator plant, your gas, if it went down, what would we cost to have a backup in place? Nobody's going to try to give it to you at a market price, and that might hurt a church you with a hundred and twenty.
So, the sharing on that is, you know, there, though it may make sense, you've got to have the backup systems, you know, what, what are the capital costs initially? How long before you start recouping and you're actually generating income because you made your own power? And of course, if your plant goes down, you're going to have to pull in, you might be paying a premium on that, so all, if we were to generate our own power, those are all things we'd have to take a look at. Sally?
Yeah, I have a question about the smart meters. From what I understand, your point, I understand the concept of doing smart meters and being able to get people to possibly change behaviors, or keep demand, et cetera, but I guess my question is, can we really afford to do this now? And the reason I ask that is, you know, through the, you know, being in council meetings, there's been so much discussion about, you know, the fact that, I guess, what Mr. Calvert calls, you know, destruction or problem, and you wouldn't win surplus, so I'm wondering why we would take a surplus now, while our monitoring is in jeopardy, and spend this, plus need more money to complete this project, plus know that we have upcoming costs down at the sewage treatment plant, plus not having the pump stations done. I mean, it just seems to me to be a big capital project, although it was probably a great idea to do it, can we afford to do it?
So, the question is, smart meters may be a good idea, but is, is the timing correct to do that? Jim, did you, you're just-
I would, one of the RFP possibilities we're looking at is that we actually would have a pay-up, a service charge to a company over a number of years, instead of actually buying the equipment and owning it, almost like a lease arrangement, where over a 10-year period, we pay a much smaller amount, so we would have the capital out there. Also, when Tom was talking about the capital, we were talking about the capital, the funds for the capital being generated by the utility. So, if we were to have sold, so if we were to sell the utility, we wouldn't have, we wouldn't have, it's not like that extra capital is coming out of the general capital fund that's being used to fund the utility operations, it's capital that's coming out of the fees that we're all paying for electricity. So, those are two things to, to keep in mind when you're considering that. And the third thing is, we did do a presentation on a cost benefit analysis, and we believe that we're looking at a three and a half to six-year payback on this capital expense. That's not something you get when you pay a loan or repair a store or something like that, so in this particular instance, there's actually an opportunity to do a cost benefit analysis, because there'll be revenue that would be enhanced and improved by installing that capital.
So, again, with the question, as far as, is this the proper time? And the response was, there, there is a, a payback, there's also the option to kind of do a lease or service charge, so without having the capital expenditures. And this also reinforces the idea of, what this whole town meeting is about, is what does it mean to be a town-owned utility? If we were running a utility period, there'd probably be no questions, and JCPenel had probably very little discussion. Smart meters, let's get our meter, meter readers out of here, we can't afford to have them out there, we're running electric utility, we need to do it the best possible way. We're running a whole town, and so there we are, the balancing of capital in electric, do you keep it and reinvest it, or do you shift it? And that's, that is one of the questions we have to work with.
Can we get this one followed, so we can have good evidence that a payback will actually occur? Because it's supposed to be coming from savings, have we done any audits of existing meters to actually say that we're going to save 1%? I mean, a lot of payback seems to be in the water, it just doesn't matter, do we have a guarantee that we are going to realize those savings, given the fact that this might not be two part-time meter people? Because there's also the cost of the $2,000 a year for running this. So, we're, we're the evidence for the savings, I guess, how would that?
Some of the, some of the payback comes from a better control of- Some of the, some of the payback comes from better control of usage during peak times. Is that, that's a big part of it. Anything else besides that?
Well, I have two things. Lennin's exited Califord's Beagle prior to radiation on water. All the users have been paying at a rate with an increase that had a four-year sunset. And for the last two years, we've been taking $200,000 off that dedicated revenue sheet and putting it in the whole pot for this project. So right now, currently we have $400,000 annually first of 2013 as we both have entered here, collecting that $600,000 that the users have put in for the meters. And in terms of the cost benefit analysis, 80% of our revenue for water come primarily from the large commercial users. And under this replacement, under our ordinances, the commercial users are financially allocated to, A, for the installation of our meters. Unfortunately, our meters get older, and our meters are up to 20, 40 years old. They don't run faster, they run slower. And our experience with the large commercial meters that they're required in every five years to recertify the accuracy of the meters for this surcharge. So we've been tracking the large end users, which are probably significant. We don't have residential meters, and there's a significantly high failure rate on the commercial meters. So we think, like, we can, for example, get trapped with that set of residential sites, based on our meter readers and our employees getting into the homes, the meters, the condition of the meters on the road.
Anything else on this question?
Yeah, I'd say, I guess we should pursue smart meters. And also, especially as I said in the previous meeting, that we should look into maybe solar or wind generation topics, freshly municipal and educational buildings that have large flat roofs. And of course, they don't really pay for, I mean, they do, but they don't pay for electricity. So if the town building generates its own electricity, it's only going to help us and not hurt us. And again, large flat roofs, easy to install, and of course, yes, the roof loads probably would support that. Again, that's a generation I strongly encourage versus, again, going to smaller, individual, solar, you know, people's homes and stuff, where trees can get in the way of other things and stuff like that. And it's hard regularly.
So the recommendation there is that we went into generation, take advantage of all the flat roofs in town and do, and use solar. Look at the potential for wind also. Helen?
I think we should add the parking lots into that mix, so we can protect the cars and shade them in the summer and collect the solar.
So basically, look, look at all borough property and where appropriate, do the self-generation through solar.
I know this is on the water, on the meters, but we're talking about these smart meters and everything. I ask, or are there plans to actually order any of these water meters? Someone would take maybe 190 of them out, like 3% of them, test them to see how slow they're running, and then adjust that $600,000 savings number accordingly if they're running faster or slower than they're doing at that spot. But I haven't heard that a test that they've done on any number of meters. So we really just talk the numbers up on the wall and hoping it sticks when push comes together.
On the commercials, on the large user side, we already require testing on a regular basis. And I can just share my own experience with YMCA. Two buildings, two meters. One passed that a problem, other was failed, maybe not miserably, but to the point it's certainly failed. And so just that alone, I wouldn't say it's 50/50. That's certainly not a scientific model, but it, it goes to show that, who knows, you know, the residential meters are far older than what we have in most of the commercial buildings. But, you know, is it worth the, the test? Or once we commit, the other thing is, it's a test afterwards, because if the metering goes way up, and we know what gets pumped and what gets metered, and they don't equal each other. So it's, it's another thing that maybe that gap will get closed. All right. We'll move on to the next question. Should we use the utility to advance sustainability and become a leading environmental town in the state? And if so, how? Heavy question.
Yes, yes. Talking about all these smart meters and generating our electricity, we might as well go all the way and become completely sustainable. And figure out how to have that backup. Should one generator break down, or should a solar array go down? An experience and knowledge of solar arrays, if a panel goes down, all the other panels still work in, depending on the wiring and how it gets to the inverter. That's critical. So if you have many smaller converters, rather than one large converter, your chances of having a complete blackout from one array is lessened. Instead of having a 100 watt converter, you have 10, 10 watt converters. One goes down, you still have 90 watts coming out. And so you can do much better overall. As far as the gas generator, if the gas generator were to go down and lose a five megawatt, then we'd have to have two generators or at least enough replacement parts to ensure that you can put that up within a reasonable amount of time to satisfy everybody now. So, you know, we don't want to wait 16 months for a piece that's on backup. So we would have to have that in. But that would be, you would be a leader in the state and in the country at that point, especially if you do a setup.
So, so by encouraging, not only do we have sustainability and become a leader environmental, we also create a system where we, instead of one large plant that we are exposed to that goes down, we have many multiple arrays, and the odds of them all going down are greatly diminished. So we have, almost have a fail-safe system. Is that kind of, Charles?
I think this should be explored. And I'm wondering if the gas producers at council meetings is a possible source.
Speaking, speaking, speaking for myself, I've sold mine for a 10-year contract already. So it's already been bound.
I do want to say that the joint meeting, they're very sustainable. They have a mention there that uses not only electricity, but it can be, they have a switch, they can put it, they actually use the methane in the digesters. And so in a sense, it'd be extremely sustainable for that.
James?
I think we should. And I remember we were all, again, at one of the town meetings talking about newer sources of lighting, better streetlights and stuff, because obviously you see some of our streetlights flicker on and off. Sometimes they're on earlier than they should be, and sometimes they're later than should be. And obviously, putting those back in line will save us money just through efficiency. And there's more efficient bowls will save us electricity as well. And I still never got an answer, why would we have a blue light bowl on the other side of the drain? So one of these, that you mean was...
All right. Blue light special, but okay. Taken away from that is pretty much this environmental and sustainability. We've been thinking about solar panels, but taking care of just making sure our own street lighting, everything we do, is as efficient as possible. Yep. And then Tom.
I think it would be great, because we have solar panels. In our family, we have three higher cars, and we put solar panels on our short house. We tried to do here, but we have too many trees. We've got a tree down. The problem was that our house was $40,000 to put solar panels. We got a $10,000 rebate from the US government. I don't think you could get that anymore. I can't imagine that we can afford this in Madison right now. It's a wonderful idea, but I'm, Sandy, in urgent caution, as far as that goes.
So being prudent on how we do things and the timing. Tom?
The only, I would ask, based on my experience, when you take leading environmental, there's another adjective that goes along with that, leading, leading edge. And I would be very, very, I think, conservative in terms of stepping to being the first horse out of the barn, so to speak, in this kind of area.
So with, Marianne and I'll come back with a quick poll question, but go ahead, Marianne.
I have a question with very little knowledge, may mind it. But I know the board of public facilities have a food energy program. They run into some difficulties at the same time. I don't recall exactly how it works. I don't know if somebody knows if that's an option, of course. But I know what they do is provide funding for food energy programs.
Most of, most of those programs, we have not been eligible for, because we don't, do not pay into the societal benefits. And so as a municipally-owned utility, we kind of stand alone.
I would say so.
So with this question, here's my quick poll question, and this will be, we'll do a little very unofficial show of the hand. If policies to encourage solar or to become more sustainable, more environmental, environmentally friendly, reduced our surplus, would you be supportive of it? So, so here it is, you know, the somewhat related to Tom's question. Let's say we had policies in place. This is, this is not a given, that just because policies encourage green costs your money, that's not necessary. But let's say we got very aggressive, and we had policies encourage green, but reduce the surplus. How many people would be supportive of that? I'm just raising my hand to show I'm not, okay? And how many people think we should not have policies that would affect the surplus? Okay. So it's, at least in this unscientific poll here, that people would be fairly supportive of doing what we can to encourage. Of course, this is very unscientific. I will not, this is not to be published as a true poll. And we're, Tom and then Steven.
I understand that there are some programs where the capital can be provided free, like the total installations, if you negotiate with an electric grid, it's based on those solar installations. Has anybody looked at those programs?
As a municipality, we have not, so basically, basically, if you're going into solar, if your question right, you have, you have an option. You can buy the panels yourself, and you're, you're now reaping the benefits, or you can get into a power purchase agreement. So basically, you're now buying electric through another entity. They're, they put the panels on your roof, and there's a meter on there, and you're paying them for the electric comes off there. Usually it's at a lower rate. Again, it's green, so you feel, you might feel good about it. So those are usually the two options. Have we, have we looked at that? We've looked at several possibilities as we've looked at solar panels, as far as putting it in its, both methods. The advantage of the power purchase for the borough entity or even for a nonprofit is there's tax benefits. If you buy, you can take depreciate and other things. That's, doesn't help us any. So that's, that's how the other people make some money. And that's certainly things we would look at as we go forward.
In relation to the surplus, we're talking, the surplus then is held and reserved, not the surplus generated by the electric company?
The...
The money surplus. There's two.
Yeah, there's, yeah.
Okay, so I would like to see this town develop a policy on how that surplus is reduced. Because my experience and opinion, things get done, surplus goes down, utilized, but there's no procedure on how that's done. The money just disappeared. Mr. Califford's been doing little dances and screaming about how it's affecting our bond rating and all of that. So yes, if it's to affect the surplus, and we go into alternative energy, you would have to have procedures on how that's going to come down. So it just doesn't all disappear overnight because something went wrong.
So that's another reinforcement of the fact that none of these decisions are a standalone decision, that they, you make it, it doesn't affect anything else. Have to look at impact on surplus, impact on our bond rating, and so on. Makes a good point. Anything else along this question? We've got right on time. I'm going to sneak one more question, which related to a comment that was earlier, is, I don't have a slide for this, so we'll have to remember it as I read it out. If you were sitting up here, would you, and this is not to sell or lease out the utility, would you think it'd be a good idea to study such a thing, to know what it's, what the impact was? So to answer the question, which we started off with, are we better off owning our electric utility? Should we really get a answer to that? Thoughts?
Yeah, I think the question is, do we know if we're better off?
Right. We got this good gut feeling, but do we know? And maybe it's worth doing the research.
I would agree, you know, financially, I do think there's always the question with the service. There's no question about the service. We know what priorities we bring from the month, in terms of the, but you've been afraid of, or is there a financial answer to this? And so that's, everything does have to be.
And I think the takeaway on that is, just like everything else, don't just come up with the answer financially doesn't make sense. The other part of it is service-wise, doesn't make sense. It might be one answer financially, and then a completely different answer service-wise.
We don't know if there's a fine buyer.
And which is, which is a, yep. A big, big part of the, big part of the question. You can't make any money on the sale if there's no buyer out there.
What's the deal with the Madison customers?
Sandy?
I just raised the question, but a big part of the answer is if you're paying equivalent rates for electric and our taxes are being reduced because of it, you would have to be able to sell the utility at such a cost or such a price, you'd be able to create a damage, and you'd be able to pay that tax.
Right.
So what kind of number that, and we're getting astronomical on that.
Yeah, to spin off. And again, we started off by pointing out that 3.5 million is historically low. So just to minimally spin off 3.5 million a year, that's, takes a sizable number. That's a, any other, any other thoughts on our bonus question there? The last couple, next slide really talks about this whole process. So are there any other questions on your electric utility? Just things you want to share? So we'll take some feedback. Was, so we had our two parts. We had our informational session, followed by discussion questions. So talk about the informational section. Was that helpful? Did that give you knowledge you didn't have before? Did it help you? You're walking out in a better place, ready to take that Madison Electric 101 test? Not to hint that'd be good enough, okay? Discussion questions? Did they bring out some ideas?
That was.
All right. Next steps. As I said, in the early slide, you saw that sponge. So we've been absorbing. That sponge started off this size, now it's this big. So I appreciate the ideas. And just, you know, there are a ton of great ideas, but to put James on the spot, that whole idea of you're a public utility, make sure you do your homework. If you do smart meters and you're gathering individual information, make sure that does not come fall under Oprah, because that would be a very negative impact. So, you know, we learn something new every day just from little questions like that. So I thank you very much. And I thank Doc for your help in your presenting and all the work putting the slides together. Also Jim Burnett for the slide presentation. And here it is, early August. A fairly nice night compared to what we've been having. You've come down here, so thank you. And we'll be back in October with our next town meeting, and it'll be on the capital budget process, which is, as we saw tonight, a very hot topic. And it will be timely as we move into the next budget cycle. So thank you very much. And with that, meeting adjourned. And don't forget, we have copies of the PowerPoint on your way out. Tell your friends that it will be posted.